No video. We'll call the Monday, April 13th, Water Selectment Meeting to Water. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Vice Chair, I don't know if you want to start with the resignation people are aware.
Okay. We'll go to the correspondence. We're just... Chairman Bill Dunn resigned from the Board of Selectmen effective today. He sent in a letter of resignation. I think it probably should be read. "I'm giving my immediate resignation from the Board of Selectmen. I hope I have made a difference in the town of Groveland for the past two years. I would like to thank all Board of Selectmen members for working with me to resolve town issues. I believe it's time for new faces and new ideas to come to the Board. Sincerely, Bill Dunn." Effective... Immediate. Approve the warrants. Somebody need the warrants?
You want me to do it?
Sure.
Before we start, I just wanted to say thank you to Bill for the years of service that he provided to the town. This job isn't as easy as it looks, so, thank you. So, motion to approve payroll warrant 20-41 in the amount of $157,151.60.
We have a second?
Second.
Second, moved and seconded. Any discussion? None, all in favor? It should be a roll call vote. Oh, no, no, we don't have anybody participating remotely. All in favor? In unanimous.
Motion to approve bill warrant number 20-41 in the amount of $1,153,358.18, which breaks down to town, $114,346.48. Water and Sewer, $13,196.12. Payroll withholding, $21,703.18. Lights and bills, $177,061.78. Grants revolving, $5,008.88. And Kentucky assessment, $822,041.75.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? None, all in favor? In unanimous. Approve the minutes. Executive session minutes from March 16th, 2020.
Move to approve executive session minutes from March 16th, 2020.
Second?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? None, all in favor? In unanimous. Minutes from March 16th, 2020.
Move to approve minutes from March 16th, 2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? None, all in favor? In unanimous. Minutes from March 19th. Thursday, March 19th.
Motion to approve minutes from March 19th, 2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? None, all in favor? Three, one abstained.
I'm sorry, who abstained? Who abstained?
I did, but wasn't there.
I didn't hear you.
Meeting of Monday, March 23rd, 2020.
Motion to approve minutes from March 23rd, 2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Three in favor. I abstained, I wasn't there. Discussion and possible vote. COVID-19 discussion with the Board of Health. Claire? You're up.
Once again this week, I'd like to congratulate and thank all the people of Groveland for carrying out what they need to do in order to control this unbelievable infection we have throughout the nation. And I just have a couple of numbers I'd like to pass out. These are today's numbers. Statewide, we have 26,867 cases. And Essex County is third number-wise as far as the number of cases. Middlesex is first and Suffolk is second. And the median age is 50 to 59. Okay, so it's... They're still saying it's holding. One interesting thing is that the FDA approved a medication that has come over from China that evidently was approved in China for the flu. I don't know how far they've gone with it as far as the coronavirus go. General, the Brigham, and UMass Worcester are now testing these... this drug, okay? And hopefully, hopefully, it's classified as an antiviral. So, keep our fingers crossed that this is going to work. We're at nine cases. Two more came in over the last week, confirmed. Any questions?
How many recovered?
We have one family that's totally off precautions now. We're quarantined.
So, these nine, does that include...
That includes them, you know, because they're considered confirmed cases. Okay. Another case is one individual, you know, in one home. We don't know about the rest of the family at this point. Nothing's been documented. One other family that has had two people unquarantined. Now, we haven't received the confirmation yet because evidently her mailing address is in New Hampshire. So, it probably has to go through New Hampshire to get to Massachusetts. That's the way it's been working before we find out that she's confirmed. But I was told by a family member that she was confirmed, so that would give us 10 if it comes through.
So, you've got possibly 10, but a couple of them have recovered.
They're off quarantine.
Off quarantine.
Okay. And again, no one from Groveland's been hospitalized, so that's great. Does anyone have any questions?
Anybody question for Claire Bill?
Kathy, Kathy's smiling.
Typically, when people get tested, how long does it take to get the test? And how long does it take to get the test back, the results?
It depends on who's doing the test. Still, some of these tests are taking almost a week to come back. Which, which is not good.
Now, in the interim, in that week that it takes the test results to come back to that individual, are they self-quarantining, you know, because they don't know? Or are they just going about their lives because they don't know?
They're sick, so, you know, the ones I've spoken to have stayed home. And lots of times, the... This one family that has... I know they're all going to test positive, but only one has this past week. And the person that tested positive became symptomatic like 24 hours after the exposure. And then her husband became symptomatic 24 hours after she did. And the husband's PCP said, "You don't need to be tested because you're going to be positive. Just stay quarantined." So, stuff like that's throwing the numbers off. So, all our numbers that we're having nationwide, really, are not accurate because of that kind of thing.
Right, so there's still inadequate testing out there right now available to...
You know, I think what they're doing is because, you know, there aren't enough tests still. Well, you know, you're positive, don't bother being tested. So, we'll save the test for someone else.
And those tests are only issued to folks that display symptoms currently?
They have to be symptomatic. Have to be. So, there's a lot of different labs doing this, okay? Some of the local labs are testing them pretty fast now. One person I spoke to tested in, I think it was Melrose, to a walk-in. And she found out within hours after the test was done. And other people have waited days.
Well, they have that new rapid testing in Lowell. It's 15 minutes.
Yeah, they would have to drive you out to Towers or something.
That's an antibody testing, from what I understand.
Well, those are the people that are recovered that have antibodies built up for it?
Or people that... They've recovered, right. Or people that have symptoms.
Right, so they... There's, when you go through, there's a five-minute negative test, and then it takes up to 15 minutes for the positive test. So, after you get your results, if it's negative in five minutes, they send you on your way. And otherwise, you go to this holding to wait for the full 15 minutes. And then, if it's positive, a doctor will come over and counsel you through the car window and give you some documentation on what the next steps are. But it's just down the street from me, and it has been packed. I mean, hundreds upon hundreds upon hundreds of cars there every day.
The last I heard, they were doing like a thousand a day.
It's packed.
And it's all drive-up.
Yep.
Kathy, any questions for Claire?
Yeah, just clarification for people. So, from what you've been telling us, which is great, and I thank you for tracking all this, when someone in a household has a definitive positive, they assume that the remaining people living with that person are going to come down with it, so they don't bother to test them, which, to me, makes sense, right? I mean, it's not about...
They're not testing the children, you know, which is... You know, that's fine.
Right, because what would be the point? I mean, just to keep an exact count, or are we trying to...
But there needs to be a category for these people, I think.
You think, to get a better demographic?
Yeah.
Yeah. But I suspect that what we're trying to do is just try to keep up with how fast it's progressing, whether it's, you know, two, three, or four. It's still... We're still seeing an increase right now in Essex County.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes. So, we're not seeing the flattening at this point.
I haven't heard anything about flattening so far.
I don't think the state or the county yet, no.
No, that's... I mean, Mike from the Board of Health has been sending us really great data. And I keep looking for it. The math teacher in me wants to see that flattening. And so, hopefully, this next week or so, we will start to see what they're hoping for, what we're all hoping for.
Hopefully, hopefully.
So, as far as the Board of Health is set, do you guys have everything you need to be doing what you have to do right now? Are you...
I think so.
And I understand you brought in another, another grant? In addition to the $6,000 grant, we got another grant.
It was... You know, they reevaluated the amount, and so this one is for 2,000.
And the first one was five.
Oh, five, okay. So, if we got five, we got two. Will, will that stay there and like keep... Like, is this... If this keeps going, will it keep getting a little bit?
That's going to be just for this, right now.
Right, so there... So, this is the money that the state has given. And for the smaller communities, they gave it to the regional planning agencies, and then they're distributing it as the need occurs. So, the first round, they gave five to us. We just got notice today that they gave us an additional two. Should this keep going for weeks, months, there will be additional funding. The Governor's Office has told us in our weekly... in the weekly calls that I have with their office, that there will be additional monies coming because they want to make sure we have whatever resources we need at the municipal side to deal with this. What amount that'll be, we have no idea.
But do we have to do the whole form thing again? Or will this form that we've already completed stand as a...
There's no such thing as a form. We haven't done a form.
You had to file something. I remember you talked...
That's something completely separate. This is nothing. This is through... This is money that's been given to us without any documentation. I mean, we had to just put down what we... You know, who here is responsible for filing the paperwork. But this is not like the MEMA stuff that we'll have to do, you know, when they... When this is all said and done, then MEMA's going to send out all the forms that we do like a snow emergency, that we have to classify all the expenses, and we have to list everything separate, and then we have to send all the canceled checks and all that. That's for reimbursement. This is just money upfront for whatever we need for this purpose.
We, we did put some numbers together for different things that we might need with the first one. And the second one...
But I don't think they used that because they gave us their own amount.
Right, but they said from now on... That's what I was told anyway. From now on, you'll just have to sign it.
Yeah.
The agreement.
And how is... It's Joe, right, who is doing the supervision of our businesses here in town? Is it Joe?
Oh, yes.
Yes, okay. And how... Does he report in to us or to you at any point on how it's going with making sure everybody's following the guidelines that businesses have been given?
You know, he really reports to the board.
Okay.
I mean, if I happen to be around and I hear about something, or, you know, then I'll tell him. Like, I got a business that's been open this whole time.
Okay.
They're closed now.
Okay. I was waiting to hear the punchline. Good, okay. So, so he's keeping up with things and doing the best he can?
Yeah, you know, he even went to the farms, which is something I never thought of, you know, making sure there's two stables, horse stables, that give riding lessons.
Oh, okay.
And he went to both of them to make sure that they weren't giving any, any lessons during this whole thing. And they weren't.
Great, that's good news. And tell Mike, I really... I love the spreadsheets that he sends us. I really do. I mean, they don't show the good news we're waiting for, but they're... He's really doing a fantastic job, and I find that it's very informative. I appreciate that.
It is, it is. I'll tell him. Thank you.
Hope he can hear it.
Mike, you have anything for Claire?
I don't have anything else to add, no.
No? Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got another question, if you wouldn't mind.
Go ahead.
The, the walking trails, have they also been closed down like the parks?
They're supposed to be. I mean, I don't, I don't monitor them because I'm not up at VZ all the time, but they're supposed to be.
Sorry, VZ, I was, I was driving by Cedar Dale the other day and noticed there were, you know, a few cars parked there on that trail on that... What would that be, with Seven Star Road?
Oh, it's... No, that's Bear Hill, isn't it?
Bear Hill?
I think.
So, we did not close the walking trails. That was not part of our order that we closed. We told people they could go out and walk as long as they stayed away from people.
Just the parks? They can't walk in the parks? The trails are open?
Well, you can walk on the parks as long as you're just walking. But you can't drive, and you can't use any of the recreational fields. But people can walk around town. I know some communities have. If anyone's familiar with Wakefield and Lake Quanapowit, they actually closed that walking trail because it's so narrow and you can't keep a safe distance. We have not done that here. So, if that's something the Board wants to explore, we can. But we have not closed any trails.
I just note, once... There's really no visibility, once you get beyond that parking lot, of who could be congregating in those trails. It's difficult to ascertain whether it's a problem or not.
Well, cool. Somebody makes a complaint about there would be a problem, nothing really to address.
Right, but what are you going to put a string across there so it's closed? It's, that's not going to do anything.
I don't know. I know they've closed parking lots at beaches and put up Jersey barriers just so people can't park there to get onto these locations.
They park somewhere else, and then they still go.
Yeah, some places are really tight.
I was up at Rybe Beach just to go for a drive, and there was a ton of people just parking on the road and then climbing over the dune and going down to the beach instead of going through the stairs.
I was there last week. People take a picture of the, the super moon. And on the way back, the police were out there telling everybody, "You gotta, you gotta get out." And they were putting up, you know, caution tape on the sidewalks. And dispersing people.
But even at the state level through DCR, they're opening up some parking lots so that people can walk because that was not their purpose, was to close walking access. So, I know DCR was making some changes to allow people to still get out and walk around the beaches as long as, again, they maintain a safe distance.
It doesn't seem to be either coordinated or organized.
Not a total answer.
Right.
A lot of beaches, they've closed access to the beaches, the parking lots, everything. And in other places of the state, they're not, so it's...
Well, so, the private beaches and town-owned, the state made no ruling. All they did was rule on the DCR beaches. So, anything under DCR's control is what they are mandating. Everything else is up to local authority, whether or not they want to close or not.
One question, Claire. Does the Board of Health have any tests? Are they doing any testing? Are you?
No, no.
And you don't anticipate getting any equipment to do that?
No. No, it would have to be done by a lab.
Almost anybody, anything else? No. Claire, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Claire.
You're welcome.
Request from the Water and Sewer Superintendent regarding labor staffing.
So, Colin's on the Zoom meeting. I'm going to unmute him. There is some communication in the packet, the request that he submitted and some backup. So, Colin, are you here? Can you guys hear him?
Barely, yep.
Okay, so do you guys have questions for Colin? Do you want him to comment on his request?
It'd be nice if he made a comment first.
Well, why don't we just read, read his request out loud?
I'm going to try and change these speakers. Okay. They'd like you to make a comment and discuss your request. Oh, hang on, Colin, wait, we can't hear you. Okay, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's excellent.
Okay. Yeah, we're just trying to avoid the possibility of wiping out the whole water department if one of them gets sick. We're required to have staffing seven days a week. So, if one of my guys gets it, it's going to mean that all three of them are wiped out. One of... One of our surrounding communities already, and they had to hire a third party to come in and operate their water system. We're not in a financial situation to be able to do that. So, we're trying to take measures to avoid that.
Kathy, any questions?
I like your idea. So, your idea is that rather than having them all come in, one, the man on call comes in daily. Only one person comes in. Is that what you're thinking? To tend to the work that...
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm proposing.
Right, right. And that way, you... They're not all... How many are in your department? It's only three or four, right?
Three.
Three, okay.
Yeah, only three of them.
Right, so, so this makes a lot of sense to me. I, I think that we certainly don't want to see the whole Water and Sewer Department get quarantined. I don't know how to do your job, so I couldn't fill in. So, I think they're being very proactive. I think this is a good idea.
Mike?
I'm assuming that with this kind of round robin thing, that everything in the office would be disinfected after each day?
Well, so the office...
Or whatever the equipment or whatever they're using? Because I think that that's also going to be a concern. Like, if Colin had it and he didn't know it, and then he was out using the truck, and then somebody else came in, and then all of a sudden they got it, you know, how do you, how do you mitigate that?
Right, so Colin, what are you doing at the shop and to keep things clean?
So, currently, they are all going in their own trucks. You know, they have to interact with each other in the morning in the building because they all report to the same location. But other than that, they're just, you know, they're sanitizing stuff, staying social distancing in part. When they're on, on call, one guy goes and actually does the chemistry in the wells. So, it was... They would have to sanitize it basically at the end of the week for the next guy that comes in, so there wouldn't be any potential cross-contingent.
Right, so the same guy is on call all week long?
Okay. Yeah, as long as they're, understand that that's also something that they have to keep aware of, then I'm, I'm fine with it too.
Bill?
Yeah, we like to keep it pretty clean and just drink the water.
Yep.
No, I mean, anything you need to do to stay safe and, and keep the department running ought to be encouraged. So, I encourage it.
Okay. And I did think Kathy at least got the email about the work that we're doing with the highway over at Washington Street?
They all did. It's all, it's in their packet.
Thank you. Looks good.
As soon as, you know, this stuff goes away, I guess, we'll... We have some pipe over there and a hybrid we have to get rid of. But the, my crew did work with the highway and accomplished that and got the materials out of there. In one day, it was a team work that happened over there.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we're all set. Thank you.
I would request, just because we are changing their work, if someone wants to make a motion to follow Colin's request to...
I'll make the motion.
Only have the on-call person report for the time being.
So, to accept the recommendation of... Is he superintendent?
Yes.
Superintendent Colin Stokes to have the... To alter the staff working schedule so that the man on call comes in daily to perform the required work and tend to any time-sensitive work that comes up.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? In unanimous.
Thanks, Colin.
Thank you, Colin.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys. Stay safe.
Cool.
Next, employee cured time.
So, if I may, I would like to request, given the situation that we're in, the current policies, all the contractual, all the union contracts, the exception of myself, and the personnel policy, employees are required to use all but two weeks of their vacation time on a normal year. And then it must... They can carry that over, but it must be used by the end of September. I would like to ask the Board for this one year to change the vacation policy across the board to allow employees to carry over into next fiscal year any unused vacation time, provided it's used by June 30th, 2021, with the caveat that shouldn't employee leave or retire before September 30th. Only 10 days of carryover may be bought back. And employees who leave or retire on or after October 1st would not be eligible for any buyback on the fiscal '20 carryover. So, would not have a budgetary impact if someone was to leave, other than what they currently are entitled to. But this would allow, because obviously, no one's taking vacation time, this would allow employees to carry over their time. And then, instead of making them use it all within three months, will be short-staffed again, depending on when this is lifted. That will give them 12 months to use that time, so we're not dealing with short-staffed issues. However, any personal time should still be used by June 30th. And based on the union contracts that allow comp time or time due, mainly the police department, that that still must be used by June 30th. So, I would like to ask the Board, take that into consideration, just so that we can put word out and employees don't have to worry about losing their time and getting into a situation that then, again, if we lift the order and then everyone's taking the time off to use it up.
Comments? Kathy?
So, is this the contractual and non-contractual employees?
It's everybody.
It's both groups, yeah. So, anybody... They obviously haven't been able to take vacation time starting from March.
Correct. And the, and the current policies is the same, like I said, it's the same for every contract with the exception of mine. They're all the exact same language. They have to use it all by June 30th, that can carry over 10 days, and has to use it by September. And that's the same. So, I'd like to, just for this one year, anyone who has that language, just allow them to not follow those two restrictions.
So, they're going to be allowed to carry over more than 10 days, and they can use it by June 30th, 2021?
Yes. But with the caveat on buyback, so that it's not financially costing us more money. If people carry over six weeks, and then, you know, we have a couple people pending retirement, they shouldn't be allowed to buy all six weeks back for cash. They'd have to use that vacation time before they retire.
So, our motion should include that anyone who leaves the employment before June 2021 can only be paid for the 10 days?
So, if an employer leaves or retires before September 30th, so if that's the still same restriction, they would only be paid back for 10 days. Because in a normal year, you would only be allowed to be paid by, for those 10 days if you retire before September 30th. If you retire after that, you're not entitled to that time normally. So, we shouldn't be paying cash out for that time.
Okay, so, so the only thing is we're changing up to September 30th, they would get paid the 10 days. And then, the only other thing is now they can carry over and use that vacation by 2021, and it doesn't carry over past that.
Correct. Correct.
Mike, are you going to manage this further?
I do anyways.
I know, but is it... It sounds like it's going to be a lot more work.
It really won't because it's just... I'm just adding the existing vacation time to what they carry over. Normally, I go through on June 30th, and anyone that has extra time... Um, normally, I go through on June 30th, and anyone that has extra time, I have to edit it anyway, so this will just allow it to be carried over. And, and again, I think this will help, um, our managers and department heads, because then everyone will be taking those first three months off.
No, I agree with it, yeah, I just, it was more the management of everything.
No, I'll, I can deal with it.
It's not like you don't have enough to do, so it's.
I do it anyway, so it's not that big of a deal.
Bill?
Yeah, how does, how will that affect forward-looking next year? Um, where people essentially may have double the vacation time they typically have, and they're gonna want to take it. How's that gonna affect staffing in 2021?
So it's only, so it's gonna affect, it'll affect fiscal '21, and as I spoke to, um, I spoke to the police chief, because, you know, obviously his workforce has a big impact with this. And in my opinion, at that point, it's a department head internal policy. So if you want a, for fiscal '21, if he wants to put in place that people can't take more than a week off at a time, or request certain things, but the expectation is all that time has to be used in the next year. Um, so the people that get six weeks, that have all six weeks still on the books and are getting another six weeks, they'll be taking 12, well, 10, because they can still carry over two weeks of the new allotment. So they would have to take 10 weeks of vacation over the 12 months.
Right, so I'm just trying to look ahead and say, what kind of staffing issues would we have at that point if people have that much vacation time and they all have to use it before June 30th of 2022, right? Because it won't be carried over. Well, some of it will, because of contractual agreements, but most of it will use or lose it?
Right, they'll have to use it by June 30th, 2021. So they all have to use it in the next year.
Right.
But again, I think it becomes a department head to manage that. It's up to them to manage that and have a conversation. And that can be something I put out, is, you know, now you have to worry about how are you gonna manage that? How are you gonna have people schedule their time? Because we haven't required employees to use time during this period right now. And most people only take time off sort of April to June, because the weather gets nicer. And my concern is just, I don't want it to go two years of time, because then we're carrying over, you know, for multiple years. So I thought that this was the fairest way to...
Basically just giving them more time to use their carryover time.
Right, I mean, if you want to put a caveat on how much they can use and when, we can certainly do that. You know, no more than one week a month.
Yeah, I just worry about, you know, the, the, the math of it all. You have X number of weeks, you have Y number of employees, and you have Z number of eligible vacation days. And can that all fit into one calendar year while keeping the staffing levels where they need to be by department?
So yes, so the really, the ones that'll impact the most are, um, the public works and the police department, because they're all still working. So in my conversation with the police department, um, you know, most of them have already taken a lot of their vacation time. Anything from March forward has been canceled, because people can't go anywhere. So it's not a huge, it's not adding a huge amount of time to them. The highway and the water and sewer, not so much the water and sewer, the highway guys can't take vacation time in the winter anyways, unless they get permission. So we can certainly make sure that permission is granted, that if there's no snow expected, people could take time off. But again, I just think, then it comes down to a department head to manage the staff. If two people want to take the same time off, it's up to them to determine whether it's a seniority-based approach or if it's just a policy on who requests it first. I think that's something that should be managed personally at a department head level.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with it, as long as it doesn't adversely affect the staffing of the departments going forward, because that would be detrimental to what we're trying to do.
Right, and I wouldn't propose something if I thought it would be detrimental.
Why, why wouldn't this be a good time for people to take time off? If, uh, things are slow in town hall, it's not open to the general public, it just seems like this, things are on slow motion for the state. Would it be a good time for people, if they want to take the time off, to do it?
To do what? Everything's closed.
Take the time off?
But you can't do anything, everything's closed. They're already, we're already paying people to stay home. So if we're already paying people to stay home and only work when they can, why would someone use vacation time to do the same thing? It's not like they can go anywhere, I mean, there's no place to go, so, um, there's no benefit to employees. I mean, as it is, I'm gonna require they take personal time to just take some time off and take a day without, you know, doing work. But I, I don't think that anyone's gonna take vacation time, unless we make that mandatory across the board, that people have to use their vacation time.
To your point, I'm not sure if there's a place to go right now. Uh, the, the hotels, motels, resorts are all closed.
Oh, they're closed.
Everything's closed.
Cruise ships have been 100 days, um...
I mean, even flights, even airlines are closing down, I mean, I don't know.
Be worried about getting on a flight right now, you, you know, you're in basically this giant Petri dish, 50,000 feet above the, in, in the air, so.
No, I, I'm thinking it makes sense, I mean, you know, I know I had to cancel my vacation plans for April, and, um, you know, so we won't be taking our vacation. I don't really look at this part, this time, and, and the thing that we're going through right now is certainly not my idea of a vacation. It's extremely stressful and, um, and hopefully not going to last too much longer. So let me, can I just run by you, like, the wording of the motion, and you can tell me if this has what you're thinking? We make a motion to allow town employees to carry over accrued vacation until June 30th, tw- two, um, two conditions. One, that if they leave the employment of the town prior, anytime prior to September 30th, 2020, they are only paid for 10 days. And two, all vacation is subject to approval by the department head. Is that what you're looking for as far?
Sure.
Okay, so that way they can manage their, um, workforce. And if the department head says, "No, I can't let you go this week," then it's a no. They're not gonna come running into our meeting and say, "You guys voted that I could go on vacation." That would cover it?
Yep.
Is that a motion?
If that sounds good to everybody, yes, unless you feel like we need...
Is there a second? What a motion, do you want the motion re-read?
I'll second it, and can we have that re-read again?
Yes, okay, so the motion is to allow town employees to carry over accrued vacation until June 30th, 2021, subject to the following conditions. First, that anyone who leaves the employment of the town prior to September 30th, 2020, will only receive payment for 10 vacation days. Is that wrong?
No, but I'll add the caveat that anyone who leaves after September 30th is not entitled to buyback of fiscal '20 time.
So do you want me to put an "and" on that?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll start that one again.
That's why I wanted that, Claire, fuck up my...
No, I'm glad you did, thank you. So, subject to two conditions, the first being that anyone who leaves the employment of the town prior to September 30th, 2020, is only paid up to 10 vacation days. And anyone who leaves the employment after September 30th, 2020, does not receive payment for any vacation days.
For fiscal '20 vacation days.
For fiscal '20 vacation days, okay. The second condition, subject to approval by the department head.
All right, you have a question?
I just want to interject, there, there was another part in that where you were talking about employees that retire prior to a certain date?
Well, that's, they leave employment, so whether they leave or they retire, it's all the same category.
Okay, same thing, we're gonna consider the same thing. Nope, I'm, I'm...
And, and again, this only applies to vacation time. Personal time and time due must still be used, so we don't need to do anything, because that's still in the contract.
Do you have the motion?
Yes.
Read it.
Well, I have my motion in her shorthand. Motion to carry over vacation time into fiscal '21, subject to two stipulations. Buyback for those people leaving employment prior to September 30th, they're entitled to 10 days. If they leave employment after September 30th, they're not entitled to any buyback of fiscal '20 time. And the second stipulation is vacation time is subject to the approval of the department head.
You still second that?
Second that, yes.
Second, any questions? Comments? All in favor? Yes. We'll, we'll sell that novel.
Good luck, good luck managing that.
That's okay.
Self-published.
Discussion po- uh, postponing real estate tax due date.
So the governor passed legislation to allow us to change the due dates of excise bills or any bills that were sent out after March 16th, I believe, so it only affects our tax, real estate taxes. So there was some question on the law when it originally went into effect, that we were required to send out notification to each resident by mail. Um, the DOR has since loosened those stipulations and required, as long as we post it on our website and/or put out a time-wide call, we can follow that order. Um, so my recommendation to the board, as the tax collector, um, is that we extend the due date on the fourth quarter real estate and personal property bills, June 1st, with interest accruing beginning on June 2nd, and that outstanding bills will be put into demand before June 30th.
Okay. We need to, we should take a vote on that.
Take a, yes.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
So moved, what she said.
Second?
Second.
Second by Bill. Uh, any further discussion?
Yeah, can you, can you read that again?
Yep, so the recommendation is, so the law allows us to go up one month. So the recommendation is to extend the due date on the fourth quarter real estate and personal property tax bills to June 1st. Interest will begin accruing on June 2nd, and outstanding bills will be put into demand before June 30th.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? None? All in favor? Unanimous. Budget and town meeting workshop votes will be taken. Review fiscal year 2021 budget requests.
So, um, I don't know, I mean, we put this on there, if the board wanted to start discussing things. Um, I would recommend that we discuss the town meeting warrant first, uh, because a lot of those are standard warrant articles. Um, I think we could go through many of them tonight by just going through them, uh, pretty quickly. The, um, once we get to the budget, the budget items, um, you'll see the finance board made their first round of recommendations. They did not vote on any department that had a union contract still under negotiation. So when we get to that point, you all could do the same. You could make a recommendation to level fund union contracts pending final negotiation, however you want to do it, but, um, or we could wait on the budget piece, however you want to do it. But I would recommend if we start with the warrant, because I think, like I said, we could cruise through a lot of that fairly quickly.
So we'll start with Article 1.
Uh, would you like me to just give a brief synopsis? Because you haven't even, we haven't discussed it at all yet.
Yeah.
Sure, we, we probably should read it first.
The same ones we do every year, right?
Article 1 is our standard Chapter 90, um, petition to the state. You'll see I already marked you as favorable, because the first three are the same, we do every single year, and why would you say no to our Chapter 90 funds? But that's the first one, if you want to formally take a vote, um, however you want to do it, per article, per page. At the end, it's up to you how you want to make your recommendations. If you want to wait and do them another night, again, it's all depending on what you'd like to do.
I don't know if it matters. Kathy, got a comment?
Well, if we just do like the, um, Page 1, Articles 1 through 4, they're, the first three are standard, and, and the other one is accepting a, uh, a new road, right?
Okay, yep. Um, so I can do page by page, and if you have questions, we can stop and go through them. Um, Article 2 is the funding that, um, the state has told us right now is going to be our, um, Chapter 90 recommendation for fiscal '21. That's $219,545. Article 3 is the $900 we grant to the, um, veterans for use of VZ Park. And Article 4 is, you've already approved it, in essence, to put it on here, accepting Homestead Lane as a public roadway. Questions on any of those?
Motion to approve Articles 1 through 4 on Page 1.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Mike, anybody, Mike, you have a question?
Nope.
Any questions? None? All in favor? Unanimous. Let's do 5 through 7.
Sure. Although, Article 5, I don't know if you need to discuss more. Um, Article 5 is the street sweeper. We never followed up and had another conversation with Rennie on that.
We put on hold for now?
So we can.
We don't have any, we don't have the information we wanted.
And I, right, and I don't know that that's even the accurate amount, um, because that's what came in originally. So, um, we, we can certainly hold on that if the board wants. Um, Article 6 is the community trail easements. So this authorizes us to enter into the lease agreement with National Grid. Um, this is required in order to move forward with the project. Why don't we just do 6, because 7 and 8 go together?
Okay. There's a blank spot in the middle of 6.
Because that's not filed until the project is filed with the, so that will stay blank until, until the project is completed.
Motion to approve Article 6.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any questions? All in favor? Unanimous. Well, let's go back to Article 5 for just a second. If we need more clarification, we probably ought to have the highway superintendent come in at the next meeting and, uh, just for further clarification on that. There was a question, Kathy had a question on that?
Well, actually, I'd rather see the information first. Yeah, I'd like to see the agreement, so I don't really need to have him come in till we see the agreement.
So there is no agreement.
Okay, we're not doing it.
The way it was discussed was, because this board still has not even voted on the concept. We were not wasting town council's money to enter into agreement until this board decides if, in fact, you want to purchase this street sweeper and enter into a joint agreement with the neighboring community. So you haven't even taken that vote yet. If you vote to move forward with it, then town council can draft the agreement, both Georgetown, um, they can easily draft something up based on whatever terms you'd like, but we haven't even gotten to that point, because the board hasn't voted.
So basically, we should, if, this will go nowhere if we don't vote.
Correct.
Bring it forward, I, I, I think we should go back to it and bring it, bring it forward.
Well, you need to vote on the concept, not the, yeah.
Yeah, vote on the concept of it, sure. It, uh, it, it seems like it, it makes an awful lot of sense. $229,000 plus, that's, that's, that's a lot of money. Seven-year, uh, purchase, uh, but that's, that'll be, uh, shared by two different towns. Well, in order to draw up the agreement, we, we need to, uh, we need to bring it forward. Comments?
My comments quickly is, uh, until I can see in writing what the agreement will be between the two towns, how the lease will work, how maintenance will be, uh, divvied up, used, divvied up. I, I'm not prepared to move forward on this article at all, and given the current circumstances we're in, spend $230,000 on something that's just so open-ended at this point in time, just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. So that, that's my position.
But it doesn't seem like we're gonna even get, uh, the, the agreement, the purchase, uh, lease purchase agreement to look at unless we, uh, vote to move forward with it.
Right, I mean, I think the board needs to decide if you're in favor of it or not, that's number one. And then number two, what you want the terms to be. If we're driving this lease agreement, then this board should set the terms of whatever you want, and then if Georgetown, then you decide if Georgetown wants to agree to those or not.
But are we, are we driving those terms? Uh, all I heard is that this is what we want to do, and I haven't seen any terms.
Again, because this board hasn't had a discussion about it. This board has not discussed whether or not you want to enter into this lease agreement or if you want to do a joint purchase of the...
Here's what I remember from our last discussion. We pay, is it about $14,000 a year now for, to get?
$16,000, I think, yep.
Something like that, okay, yeah. And then we were looking at a sheet that had the lease costs, and at, at certain points, it did look like it was not a, a good thing for us, that we wouldn't save any money or even break even. So then there was a question of only one of the two towns can take, can be on the lease. And then the other town has to commit to the payments. So we have a few steps here that, you know, if, if we can develop a, a lease that is cost-effective for the town, at least breaks even, so that maybe we can sweep more than once per year, yes, I would like to see us move forward. But if this is, if these numbers are not accurate right now, I don't want to have us spend a lot of time. And by us, I mean you, because it, it will fall to you, right? It's a contract.
Right.
And we're going to have to have Denise look into this contract with Georgetown and see, what does this cost? And that, that's gonna be really difficult in the current circumstances, I think, to get that information.
Well, I mean, I don't know how difficult, but if you'll recall, after our meeting back in the fire station, um, I spoke to the Georgetown Town Administrator, and he had different assumptions than we had. And that's what sort of put a stop to this.
Okay.
Um, he believed it was Topsfield, Groveland, and Georgetown that were going in on it. Um, he thought Georgetown was entering into the lease, um, so, and I told him that the, I have a copy of the lease with Groveland's name on it, and we were told that Topsfield is absolutely not participating in the lease. So that's why we sort of waited to have another conversation about what the actual purpose is gonna be, so that you could decide if you're in favor of it, then we can... is going to be so that you could decide if you're in favor of it, then we can figure out terms, we could get council involved, it could go to town meeting, but it sort of stopped after that meeting.
But none of that has changed, right? That's all still.
I have gotten no additional information on this since then.
Well, that's what I was meaning, we have no real idea where we're even starting from. Because you said the documents are in Groveland's name, but the assumption was that Georgetown was going to be.
They thought, so Georgetown thought they were doing the, so they had a.
And Topsfield doesn't know if they're involved with it or not, or we don't know if Topsfield's involved with it.
Right, so Rennie told me Topsfield is not a player in this at all, but I don't know if that changes Georgetown's view if, because he thought it was going to be three towns, so I don't know if.
It's a big difference if it's divided by three or if it's divided by two.
So I had told him, I told Mike Farrell in Georgetown that, that at this point, the board hasn't even voted in con, in favor of the concept yet, so once that happens, then we can be in touch and actually discuss the terms, but.
Well, I'll make a.
The board hasn't even decided if they want to support it.
I'd be willing to make a motion in favor of the concept as long as it becomes cost-effective for the taxpayers of Groveland and that they're completely protected in the agreement. So if you're willing to work for it under those requirements, sure. Because there was even a question of whether we could go out to seven years.
So we can through town meeting.
Oh, okay, so that, that helps a lot because the cost becomes better, I thought, over a seven-year.
Well, yes and no.
Oh, interest.
I mean, it fits, it fits within the, it still doesn't fit in the capital request. We'd still have to go back and amend the capital request that you all approved. That was 15,000, it still will not fit under that. So the capital plan that's been approved doesn't work for this agreement anymore.
Okay.
Even at the seven years.
Okay, well, my motion's out there. If somebody wants to second it.
At least if we pass it, we'll be able to get a look at it. But other than that, you're never going to see what the lease purchase is going to be.
Well, we have, we have a draft lease agreement.
We have to agree to the concept and it, and that's the way to go, that's that way. Any other comments?
I made a motion.
So can you, can, I didn't get a chance to write down the stipulations.
So my motion is to proceed forward on the concept to find out if this is cost, cost-effective for the town in Groveland and to ensure that the taxpayers are protected under any agreement that exists between our town and any other towns.
The motion made, seconded.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Bill?
So we're not voting on this article, we're voting on a motion to.
The concept.
To accept the concept.
To look into the concept.
To look into the concept, but not the Article 5 itself.
No, because I don't know if those numbers are, I don't know what those represent whatsoever. I don't know if they're real.
I'm in total agreement, I, I, I find it hard to vote on something I know so little of.
So we're not voting on the article, we're voting on the concept so that Denise can look into it and see if there's anything there, if that would make sense. We already have the 15,000 in the, in the capital plan for a street sweeping, right?
For a street sweeper.
To rent one.
To rent.
Lease, whatever.
Right, to lease one. So we have that in there. This would be something different that we would buy and we'd be able to use it several times a year.
Right, but the capital article was for this. The 15,000 you authorized under capital was for this, for this lease agreement.
But it's not enough.
It's not enough, so that needs to be amended and adjusted when you get to the capital article because 15,000 was not an appropriate request for that line item.
Well, if we want to buy, but can we go back to what we were doing before where we just hired somebody?
Right, but then you wouldn't have that capital item. That capital was strictly for the lease.
Right, okay, okay, yeah.
The money's already in the budget to do the annual street sweeping, whether or not you approve the lease or not. The street sweeping will continue to get done.
Okay.
The capital item is tied to the lease and the new equipment.
And that capital item is null and void right now because it hasn't, it's based on nothing. It doesn't come any closer to this cost if we do it by ourselves.
If we do it by ourselves, correct.
Right.
You couldn't, we couldn't lease it individually.
And looking at the budget request, it's a street sweeper or lease would be 18,000 a year is what the request is for 2021.
And I think it's just over that as well. I don't know that the 18,000 was enough, but I'd have to double check. I think it was 18 and change with the paperwork that was given us back.
And that's to pay somebody to come in and do the job? Nope, that's another lease? Wow.
Because the same amount of money in the budget.
Yes.
Whether you pay somebody to come in or you pay the lease payment. If we pay the lease payment of 18,000, we're not paying someone to come in and do the job for 18,000.
Highway will do it.
It's the same amount of money whether you lease it or whether you are paying it.
It's not both.
I think we're, you and I are on different pages. I'm, right now, we don't own a street sweeper, right?
Correct.
Okay, how do we get our streets done every year?
We pay someone to do it.
We pay someone to come in and do it.
Correct, okay, that's what I'm assuming is already in the budget somewhere in case.
They're both in the budget.
Okay, that's, that's, okay.
The 18,000 is in the budget. Whether we pay somebody to come in or we pay for a lease, it's the same amount of money.
I get it.
It's just a matter, it's just a matter of who we're paying.
Correct.
A company or the lease.
Okay.
The, and one of the advantages to the lease as opposed to having a company come in is we're paying them to come in once a year. If we have the sweeper along with another town, it can be done more than once a year. And also, when they do paving of the roads, they always have to sweep it. We can, we can, instead of having somebody come in for an additional money, we have, we would have our own piece of equipment. So that seemed, to me, that seems like the logical way to go. It would get, certainly get done and maybe sometimes it will need to get done more than once. But anyway.
It would be, it would be somewhat our own. We'd have to share it between two or three towns and those schedules too, so it wouldn't be like, oh, we can go do it this weekend, it'd have to be on some kind of schedule.
Right, I would say, I mean, that's my concern, not so much leasing or buying, it's the sharing with another community and what the terms are and who's going to be maintaining it, who's going to be paying for it, who's going to be paying for the fuel, I mean, those are the concerns that I have.
What weeks do you have? Do you have only certain weeks? Do you have certain months, you know, what do they?
Right, who's trained to drive it, do, you know, if we're signing a lease and we're responsible for those payments, then we're responsible for that equipment for the seven years of the lease. So if it breaks on Georgetown's dime and they don't want to fix it, we have to because it's our equipment, it's our name on the lease. And the liability there is what I worry about. The concept is fine, I, but that's why I'd want to make sure that the lease covers us and the agreement with Georgetown. And again, I don't know that they're going to want to sign off on that. If we're protecting ourselves 100%, I don't know that it's something that they're going to want to entertain, but that can still be discussed once you move forward with the concept.
All right, the motion been made and seconded for the, to approve the concept to get all this information. Any further discussion? None, all in favor? Three opposed, three in favor, one opposed. So that's Article 7.
Article 7, Nate, I don't know if Kathy, you want to discuss, this is your request.
Oh, really?
To put the assessing department under the finance department.
Oh, yes, I do. I feel like as we, as we grow and now we have Debbie Webster retiring and she's retiring with, you know, a wealth of experience and knowledge, and I'm certain that it's, we're not going to be able to replace that with somebody that's going to have all of that knowledge and, and background, that it would probably benefit the new person in the assessing department to be a member of the financial and budgeting department, both for learning purposes and as well as, you know, cross-coverage and things like that, the thoughts that we've spoken about over the years, that we have a lot of offices that are a one-man, one-woman office so that if that person leaves suddenly or becomes ill, that office is not going to be able to function. And this would be a proactive step to, we would still have an assessing department, we'd still have our Board of Assessors, but the assessing department would be within the Department of Finance and Budget, which makes sense as it's a financial function. And I think we would file legislation as well, is that right?
Yes, so.
Okay.
Article 7 and Article 8. Article 7 is to file the legislation and Article 8 is to amend the general bylaw.
Right.
And I know you spoke with members of the board of assessors.
Yes, I did, I spoke with Dana Moody, who is the current chair, and over the phone, so it's, I guess, hearsay, but he said that he, he thought this made sense and that he would support it or at least wouldn't oppose it. And I thought you heard back from Bill Dark, I reached out to Bill, but I didn't hear from him personally, that he didn't have an overall objection to it.
He didn't, I was on the Board of Assessors virtual meeting last, not this past Friday, the Friday before, and they discussed this, they discussed the job description and the position, and he said, he didn't oppose it. I think, I think him and Dana are more concerned on the hours, the salary, and the position that's going to be replacing Debbie. But he didn't seem to have any objection to the concept of this either. He said he, he'd heard from you, but he didn't have a chance to call you back.
Oh, okay, good. So, so I did reach out, this is prior to the whole shutdown, and this is a concept that, you know, when we first spoke about the Department of Finance and Budget way back, we did talk about putting other departments in there like assessing, but at the time, it was such a big step for the town to change the treasurer from elected to appointed and to create the financial director position that we thought that would be enough for that piece of legislation. But this does seem a good time to do this. I think it can only result in a positive action for the town. It would create a more, more people in one department able to help each other out when they need to.
Any, Mike, you got a comment?
Nope.
Bill?
None.
I'd like to see the, the Board of Assessors weigh in on this. If, if we put this off to the, to the next meeting and get them on the phone, if they're not able to come in and, and discuss this article and they had some concerns, and before we bring it forward, I, I think we should address some of their concerns.
Their concerns were not of this, their concerns were of the position itself and the job description, but I can certainly ask them.
Yeah, I think it'd be, I think.
If that's what the board wants to do.
It would make sense. Comments?
None.
Well, I would move favorable on it now. I, I did speak with Dana, I mean, if we want to ask him to write a letter to say that he spoke with me and, and offer any concerns, I don't think their concerns have anything to do with creating a, a bigger department for this new person to work inside of.
So Kathy, you just moved favorable?
Yep, on 7 and 8.
7 and 8.
Motion for favorable, was there a second? No second, motion not carried forth. Now I'll make a motion that we get input from the Board of Assessors on this particular article about their concerns, whether they, whether they write a letter with their concerns or call in at the next meeting with their concerns and then we can act upon it at that So, any other comments? Yeah, Bill, go ahead.
I think it's very reasonable to wait a week to see what they have to say, but no more than one week.
Well, I would say two weeks because next week is a holiday on the Monday, so I would actually recommend the board that we don't meet next week, we meet on the 27th.
Will we not meet, a joint meeting with the board health even on the Tuesday?
I, I mean, my personal recommendation to you would be that, no, we take, unless something major happens in the next week, we take a week off from meeting. Because I don't know what more they're going to report on a weekly basis if our cases stay level. But that's up to you, I would personally recommend we don't meet.
Is that a second to his motion?
No, that was not a second, he hasn't seconded.
No, that was just basically a.
Kind of agreement.
Friendly suggestion to his amendment.
And if we did meet, we would only be discussing the COVID-19 because it would be an off-meeting week anyways.
True enough, true enough, okay, then in that case, I think two weeks is reasonable enough, wouldn't you say, for them to comment?
I think, we've got plenty of time, sure, two weeks, sure, sure. If they don't comment in two weeks, then we'll go forward. Mike?
So you want me to second that and then you can do a friendly amendment, is that what you, we need?
I, I don't even think you need to make that part of the motion. I can just ask them to report back by the 27th.
I'll second Ed's motion.
Okay, any other comment?
Just if, if, if they have nothing to say in two weeks, then the issue is moot, as far as I'm concerned, with them.
I, I, I agree.
So speak now, forever hold your peace, right? That's what they say at the weddings, right?
Some people.
The other people run.
Sure. All, all in favor? Yes, three, yes, four.
I didn't hear what your comment was, so I don't know why.
Other people run.
Never mind.
They run away.
Article 9.
Article 9 is to separate the Groveland Day into their own revolving fund. We've talked about this in the past, they originally put under the Pines revolving account because the intention originally was to help pay for the Pines' maintenance. That has not been what the new Groveland Day Committee is about, they're maintaining their money to fund additional Groveland Days. Therefore, it has to be a separate fund, we can't keep them in the Grove, the Pines because they're not benefiting the Pines. So this just separates them out into a separate fund so that they can hold Groveland Day legally.
Comments? Kathy?
I, I like the idea that they've had a good job, been doing a good job growing, growing this day and adding more to it, so, sure.
Mike?
No.
Bill?
I think I should abstain from any votes seeing as my wife is on the committee, but to echo Selectwoman Castro-Nelis's comments, I think they've done a great job, they've put together quite a little piggy bank for themselves and they're really looking forward to hopefully having it again this year, bigger and better, but again, the virus will dictate a lot of that for them, so they're still, hoping, fingers crossed.
Okay, motion to approve Article 9.
Second.
I think he was asking for a motion.
I thought, I thought there was the motion.
Motion to approve.
Was that a question or a statement?
Sure, I'll do a motion and second it. Any further discussion? None, all in favor? Three yes, one abstention. Article 10, you want to party out of these articles or do you want to take maybe half of them?
It's up to you, and like I said, I think we can go pretty, I.
I think we can do it.
I don't know that there's a lot that need discussion, if you want to discuss each one, we can, but I don't know that a lot really need it.
I think we could do this, come on, guys.
But, I mean, we can continue to move on and if you want to stop, we can stop.
Let's do it.
Article 10 is something that's been discussed previously, this was to remove the Personnel Advisory Board since it's been defunct and no one wants to serve on it. So this puts all control into the Board of Selectmen.
Move favorable.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion?
Does this come with a pay raise for us?
No.
Sure.
All in favor?
Second.
Unanimous.
Article 11 is, Article 11 and 12 are from, actually, in 13 and 14, these are from the Planning Department, Rebecca, to make changes to our zoning bylaws and general bylaws under stormwater management. Article 11 is deleting it in its entirety, the Stormwater Management and Land Disturbance Bylaw, and inserting a new article. It's in Appendix C in its entirety, what the new language of that would look like, that is something we need to do to follow the new requirements of the MS4 permit.
So move favorable on Article 11?
11, 12, 13, and 14, we'll take them all at once, all the same things.
Okay, so, so 11, 12, and 13, and 14.
Second, we have a second, and any further discussion? None, all in favor? Unanimous. 14, or 15, excuse me.
Article 15 is the first, and I, these I don't know if you want to hold on, I know Mike Dempsey never had a chance to come before you to discuss the community preservation articles.
He did talk to us about this, so this is for Rebecca.
Yes. Yes.
Going to do their parks and recreation plan.
Yep, but I don't know that he came in on all of them. But yes, so this first one is $20,000 that funds part of Rebecca's salary, and her proposal for fiscal '21 is to create a Parks and Recreation Operations Plan.
So, I can move favorable on 15, I understand that one.
Second.
Second. Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? On 15? None. All in favor? In unanimous. 16.
16 is $25,000 for the purposes of establishing a new dog park.
I feel like I can move favorable on that. I understand that we have to put up some money, or they can't apply for that wider grant.
Yes, and Kathy, I don't know if you, I don't think we had a full meeting when Jason came the last time. I do see he is online, so if you have questions. The proposed location at the Pines, next to the well.
I was there, I had the drawings, yes.
So it's not, they cannot build it there, because that's where the potential new well would go. So, I think they're still looking for locations. I think you could certainly appropriate this. If it doesn't come to fruition, we're not spending the money unless there's a purpose and the Board approves it, so.
Correct, right. And they need to show that we're appropriating the money to apply for that larger grant.
Yes.
So I move favorable.
Second.
Second. Made and seconded, any further discussion?
Are they still looking at Strawberry Fields as a backup, or?
To be honest, I don't know. There hasn't been any further discussion.
So this is a placeholder, basically, in case they do find something, okay.
All in favor? In unanimous.
Article 17 is to appropriate funds for historic document management at the library.
I can move favorable on that one.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? None. All in favor? In unanimous.
A boat house down at the Pines.
Motion?
Just a clarification on it, if I could. I wanted to just make sure, I know you're kind of handling this, managing it, and you're not going to go forward if Haverhill's not going to be opening this up to our students at Penn Tucket and our community, correct?
So, there's two things we could do. We could, oh. Sorry, the founder Bernie and Phil's just died of coronavirus.
Ooh.
What was that again?
Bernie, from Bernie and Phil's, the male, just died of coronavirus. So, you could do two things. We could either hold on the whole project, or we could build a boat house for Groveland only and not allow Haverhill to participate if there's need in Groveland to start a rowing program. So this funds the entire boat house. And then we'll discuss it with Haverhill and enter into agreement and either build one for just us, or build a joint program, or not build anything at all. Those would be our options.
And does Penn Tucket want to start a program involved with this?
Yes, but I think Penn Tucket wants to start as a joint program so that they get kids involved, and then hope to separate and have their own program at some point.
So do we want to do this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's a Board of Selectmen article.
Okay. Sure, then, yes, let's move favorable on this.
A motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion?
But after that.
No, can't touch that. All in favor? In unanimous.
Article 19 is $17,000 to hopefully finalize the trail program. Because it's been delayed through the state, we had additional engineering costs, and this hopefully will cover it.
Oh, I remember that. I'll move favorable on that.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? None. All in favor? In unanimous. 20.
Article 20 is the design plans, $59,600 for design plans for the rehabilitation of a historic building at VZ Park. This would be for architectural plans and specifications for estimates to rehabilitate Lucille's Cottage. And I know Mike Dempsey is on, if you have questions or on this article.
It's Project Kindling, right?
It's the kid house.
Any questions for Mike? None. Mike? None. Kathy? None. Can we make a motion?
That says it all.
No motion. Article 20? Dies. Lack of a motion. They'll move, we can move forward with a citizen's petition. Article 21?
Article 21 is $325,000 to build the all-inclusive playground at Bagnow.
We've heard about that. I'll move favorable on that one.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? None. All in favor? In unanimous.
Can I just get clarification on Article 20? So, by your no motion, you'd like that removed unless there's a citizen's petition, correct?
Yeah, it doesn't go forward.
Okay.
Well, we didn't vote to remove it from the warrant, is that what we were doing?
You voted to not, technically, you're voting to.
To do nothing.
Your favorable action is approving to put the articles on the warrant, technically.
Oh, whether we approve, whether we're in favor of them or not?
You decide what goes on the warrant.
Okay.
So if you vote unfavorable, we normally don't put it on the warrant, because you're not even in support of the article. So if you're, you didn't vote, I mean, you could vote unfavorable if you want, but if there's no motion to approve it, I would say it's not supported by the Board to put on the warrant. I just wanted to clarify, that's what your intention.
Right, well, I think my concern in not voting on it is that, based on our last discussion, it seemed like the price was really high just to determine even if you could do anything for this building.
Because you could put that money into it and be determined that they can't go anywhere.
There's a demo.
Yeah.
Right, so that if there was some way that they could come back with a much smaller amount to take a look-see at this building and tell us whether it's structurally viable, I'd be open to seeing that. I just think this is expensive just to look at the building.
Are you going to make a motion of some sort?
Well, if Mike Dempsey would like to come back with some lower cost.
Do you want me to unmute him so he can participate in this?
Sure. Why not?
All right, go for it.
Go for it, unmute him.
All right, Mike, you're on the air.
Hi, Mike.
You're on the air.
Nope.
Mike, do you want to speak to this? He said he'll submit a citizen's petition.
Okay.
In the chat, so.
Okay. All right.
They'll bring that forward.
Article 22 is the normal article to appropriate CPC funds.
Move favorable on 22.
Second.
Made and seconded, any further discussion? None. All in favor? In unanimous. Article 23.
Article 23 is the capital that you've already approved, but I would say hold on it for right now, because that $15,000 line item is not accurate. So we would have to amend that based on the amount that it actually would be for the lease.
Okay.
Okay. So I'll hold on that article.
Article 24 is the in lieu of payment from the Light Department.
They have increased their in lieu of payment after the Finance Board's recommendation, so they went from $35,000 to $40,000.
Well, nobody could be imposed to that.
Move favorable, and thank you to the Finance Committee, or Finance Board, for putting that letter forward.
Motion made. Second?
Second.
Second. Motion made and seconded, any further discussion?
The only regret I have is I wish they'd asked for 50. This game's so easy.
He didn't ask for the amount, he asked for more.
Just saying.
All in favor?
Yep.
In unanimous. Article 25.
Article 25 and 26 are the normal conservation articles to transfer money from their fees account to fund their part-time position and their expense line.
Move favorable on Article 25 and Article 26.
Second.
Made and seconded, any further discussion? None. All in favor? In unanimous.
Article 27 is the normal spending limits for our revolving accounts.
Move favorable on Article 27.
Motion on the table, on the floor, or do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? In unanimous. 28.
Article 28 is a requirement for cable access funds. We have to actually authorize a special revenue account now under the new legislation. So this just creates a separate revenue fund and transfers all existing funds into this new fund. And we had to put an annual spending limit, so I just picked $150,000 to be appropriated in year one, should we have it and need it.
Okay. Move favorable on Article 28.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? None. All in favor? In unanimous. 29.
Article 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, and 34. I would recommend you vote all at once. Those are our free cash articles. Article 29, I'm sorry, Article 29 is the overlay surplus. That will take $50,000 from overlay surplus and apply it to the budget. Article 30 will take free cash and appropriate it to the OPEB line. Article 31 takes $100,000 from free cash for stabilization. 32 is $75,000 from free cash to the capital stabilization. Article 33 is $60,000 from the free cash to the MS4 stormwater requirements. And Article 34 is $15,000 to appropriate to an account to provide funds to rehab the eight-ton dump truck in the Highway Department.
I move favorable on Articles 30, 31, 32.
29, please.
Whoops, sorry. Articles 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, and 34.
Second. Any further discussion?
You were quick on that one.
I think he wants to move it along.
Dinner time.
All, any further discussion? All in favor? In unanimous.
35, 36, and 37 are our retained earnings, which is the equivalent to free cash for the Water Department. So 35 and 36 purchases one truck to be split between water and sewer accounts. That is for a new four-by-four pickup truck. Article 37 is $110,000 to fund well development and a future site for a well.
Do we have a motion?
Move to recommend Articles 35, 36, and 37. Second.
Do we have a second?
Yep, a second.
A second. Moved and seconded, any further discussion? None. All in favor? In unanimous.
I would ask that you hold on 38, 39, and 40, because the union contracts are not set.
Move that the Board hold on Articles 39 and 40.
38, 39, and 40, please.
38, 39, and 40, Mike.
Second.
Okay, 41.
Do we have a motion and a second, we didn't have.
Oh.
To hold on Articles 38, 39, and 40 until such time as negotiations have been completed.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
I do.
Yes, Kathy, second.
Okay, any further discussion? None. All in favor? Yes.
Article 42, so 41 is the budget, we'll come back to that. Article 42 is to fix the salaries of elected and appointed officers based on the articles. So you can either approve that, or you can hold on that, either way.
Move favorable. Once we fix them, they'll be all done.
Okay, we're on Article 42.
42. Kathy has made a motion.
44, 42. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? In unanimous. 43.
And Article 43 is to adjourn town meeting and vote in the election, direct voters to vote in the election.
That seems pretty standard. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Article 43.
Second. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Made and seconded. Further discussion? None. All in favor? In unanimous.
And I'll recuse, just because I recused myself from the decision on the date of the election. So, be consistent. Is that it?
So now, we could certainly hold, and on the 27th, just go through the budget if you'd like.
So I see in our packet today, we had Finance Board recommendations, which in the last copy you sent me electronically, did not have those figures.
Correct.
Would you be so kind as to forward those to me electronically? Thank you.
So you'll see that they, like I said, they only voted on, and they did support, which maybe you all want to do, you could at least do that, maybe. They recommended the 2% for non-contractual employees, so they supported that concept that's been done the last few years.
Would you like us to make a motion on that today?
Well, it's their recommendation that will go forward to town meeting, so they did fund it. You would still have to authorize to pay it out, but they are funding it in their recommendations.
I support that.
Or we can just discuss it all on the 27th, whatever you'd like to do.
The fewer things we have to vote on, the better.
Okay. So we're putting off the Article 41 till two weeks. Finance Director's time.
Just one thing, I would like to recognize Rebecca Oldham for once again obtaining another grant. She received $15,000 for another Mass Downtown Initiative Technical Assistance Grant to assist with the parking management strategy at Elm Park. So, great job by Rebecca, as always. That's all I have.
That's it?
That's it.
Selectment time and reports. Kathy?
Not too much, I just, we keep getting notifications about donations, another donation to the Fire Department, was it? For masks, so that's always appreciated, so thank you. I don't recall who it was from, but.
It was from Daniels Electric, Steve Daniels. That'll be in my call tomorrow, recognizing him.
So, thank you very much. Everything helps. I also went and did that online thing for HUD, just because I was curious about that. I'm hopeful that we can get that sorted out, maybe when we come out of this lockdown, figure out what has to get done in the Housing Authority to get them back on the right track.
Okay, Mike?
I don't have anything new.
No. Bill?
I've got quite a few things. One is, obviously, under the current conditions, the Recreation Committee has not been able to meet. I have been able to procure a new net for the batting cage. I'm waiting to hear back from some of those folks to determine if we are tax-exempt or not, so we can move forward with that purchase. We did have our first meeting in over a month with the High School Building Committee. We had a virtual meeting on Thursday, April 9th, which went very well, considering that we had never done this before. Right now, as of today, everything is still on schedule. They'll be looking to mobilize the site either the last week in April or the first week in May. They're going to start by stripping the soil. The permitting for West Newbury was looking to be done today, hopefully that will be. And the permitting from Groveland is looking at May 13th, hopefully that takes place. Well, we've completed the, with the 90% construction for design and submitted to the MSBA, going to be submitted on April 28th. And also at that meeting, we unanimously approved the expenditure of $31,661,000 for early Package 1, which basically consists of purchasing concrete, structural steel, site work, and things like that. So I was very pleased to note that everything right now is still on schedule despite everything we're in. We're still on budget and on time, and things are progressing, could be expected under the circumstances. We're going to have our next meeting, should take place again beginning of next month, probably under similar circumstances, it'll be a virtual meeting where we all how should we say, what's the word? We all participate remotely. That's all I have to report on that. Any questions?
I had a question, just on the whole recreation thing, the baseball league would have been starting up by now, right? Softball, baseball?
Yes.
And do they anticipate still, if things open up, trying to have some kind of a season? Or are they just waiting to see what happens?
Right now, nothing has been definitively canceled. I worry less about the baseball season and the spring track season than I do about even more so than the prom, their graduation, the rite of passage for some of these kids.
I know.
I think it's such an important event in their lives that I'd hate to see it canceled entirely. But I've been assured by Dr. B. and both the Principal Seymour that those plans have not been definitively canceled at this point. They'd still like to be able to do something toward that, at least in graduation-wise. Even the prom has not been canceled at this point. We anticipated, but it hasn't, nothing's, you know, been decided yet. And the baseball season, I mean, I've told the Little League, if they were smart, they'd get together with everybody on their phone and take the whole spring season and slide it two months to the south, only because I don't think anybody's going to go away. Typically, you lose half your ballplayers once you hit July 4th, right? They go away. This year, I don't think you're going to have that kind of problem, because nobody can really go anywhere. Most everything's shut down, and what isn't shut down, a lot of people are going to be kind of still cautious on gathering in large crowds, you know, away from home, so that's where we stand now.
Thank you.
Yes.
And I think a lot of that will depend on when this Board lifts the restrictions on all the playing fields. So, it's still going to be up to this Board when you're going to allow teams to get back on the fields, so.
Yeah, and I think that really depends on Governor Baker. I mean, I think he's done an extraordinary job, leading by example. And I think we just need to follow his example and keep on that path toward. I mean, I think he's done an extraordinary job, leading by example, and I think we just need to follow his example and keep on that path toward flattening the curve and then moving toward a decreased number of cases each and every day, so that we can get back to some case of, some sense of normalcy. I'd also like to mention, if I could, I've expressed my gratitude to a lot of first responders, the police, the fire, the nurses, the doctors. Well, one group I haven't mentioned, and I think they really deserve a big hand, and when you go to the stores, please acknowledge them. These young kids at these supermarkets that are keeping their doors open for us are extraordinary young individuals. They go in there each and every day and make sure that our needs are cared for at their expense of sometimes their own health. And I think that they need to be applauded here as well as some of the first responders, because the job they're doing is, in my opinion, it's extraordinary, and they should be recognized for that and applauded for it. And that's all I have for my time. Thank you.
The only thing I got again is Steve Daniels from Daniels Electric. Steve always steps up to the plate, and it was nice of him to donate some masks to the bottom. Somebody signing off?
No, I just got a network error.
Older unfinished business. Kathy?
Nothing.
Bill?
No, sir.
Mike?
Nothing.
No, I haven't had anything. Correspondence.
Can I just, under this, can we discuss if we're meeting next week or not?
Yeah, sure, sure. On the 21st, Monday is Patriots' Day?
Yes, the 20th is Patriots' Day.
20th is.
Is the Monday is Patriots' Day.
Monday is Patriots' Day and.
So, I would, I personally would recommend that we don't meet, just unless there's something new that happens over the week. I don't know the same update unless something, but it's up to you.
I'm okay with it on standby, you know, if we need to meet. It's not like we're going anywhere. It's not like you can't call us and be like, we should meet Monday.
We don't go far, at least.
Eight-School Street Bar.
I guess until something comes up?
So, unless something comes up, I won't schedule a meeting. But something would have to come up by Thursday in order for us to host a meeting, so.
Sure.
Okay. Otherwise, we'll meet on the 27th at 4:30.
Will your message, your typical Tuesday message, still go out next week even if we don't have our meeting, just to update the town folks?
Yes. My plan is to put something out regardless of whether we meet or not, with anything, any new information or just reminders or, now I've added in thank yous to certain groups each week, so I have my, I have it mostly written for tomorrow already, so I would continue to do that. If we do plan to meet, then I would send it out probably Wednesday, although I don't want to change people. But, yeah. Well, it would still go out with something. Okay.
Okay, older unfinished business. Nobody had anything. Correspondence. Selectwoman Castro-Nalas Certificate of Completion for the HUD Environmental Review Testing. Documentation from HUD in response to the FOI request. Chairman Bill Dunn's resignation from the Board of Selectmen effective today, April 13th. Minutes from March 30th, 2020 meeting, and a minutes from April 16th, 2020 meeting.
Motion to adjourn at 6:04.
Second.
Motion made. Seconded to adjourn. In favor?